Lisa, could you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces? Thank you.
All right, Diane, I got the first name, 25 Candlewood Shore. I'm not quite sure if I pronounced the last.
Right. Right.
We may do this 20 times, I will never be mad at you.
It's a weird name. I agree. It's not mine, it's my husband's.
Okay, fine. My hand, I like it.
It's also mine. Yeah, thank you. All right, so Diane Clay, 25 Candlewood Shore. I'm here to speak in support of you fully funding the budget line for the town attorney. I'd also like to speak in support of keeping the town attorney as our town attorney. I had the pleasure of working with Matt Grimes when I was on the charter commission, and with his advice, and with Paul Simansky's leadership, who's chair. We put out the charter suggestions, recommendations, I believe in record time. They were approved at the first referendum, which I think is unusual. I believe that other towns fail with their referendum, with their charter referendum, quite frequently. So, he was invaluable to us in that commission. And just on a personal note, I have worked with three town attorneys over my years, two in Summit, and one retired, the other one came in. They were great, I had no complaints with them, but I have to say that I think you have a gem in Matt. He is, he knows municipal law like nobody's business. His door is always open. He tells it to you straight. He's just a really good municipal attorney, so I would personally think that it'd be a good idea to keep him on board and keep that line fully funded. Thank you, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Michael Barnes, please.
Michael Barnes, 17 Sullivan Farm. I wanted to speak as a town commission member, and having the benefit of an in-house town attorney for me. My commission had received some correspondence that was unusual, that we could not handle as a commission. But the nature of the correspondence was such that it concerned me to the extent where I was able to go to the town attorney right away, and Attorney Grimes was able to fill me in, and that my initial suspicion was founded that there may be a problem that the town would have to address because we had received that letter. As a commission member, I would have no way of knowing that unless I had spoken to a town attorney, and Attorney DeBella is terrific, but he's not in the building all the time. And Attorney Grimes also came and spoke to our commission, let us know why the issue that was in the letter was not one for our commission to handle, but it was one that the town had to address, and it was a good thing we brought it forward because other towns that had not brought those type of issues forward had faced legal action. So, as a commission chairman, I was able to protect my commission by having an answer right away, because it was just days before my next meeting, and if I had blown it off, the town could have faced a legal eyeball. So I just wanted to let you know that time-wise, it was beneficial to me as a commission chairman to have Attorney Grimes on staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jeff Winter, please.
Good evening, Jeff Winter, 22 Maury Road. I didn't even think that there was any issue with Attorney Grimes' position, because it was clearly approved in the budget for next year, so, good for you. One problem regarding the bonding in the town meeting that was held on, I believe it was May 28th. The RFPs, the request for quotes for the roads, and the library, and other things, those went out prior to the funding being secured. They're not supposed to go out until funding actually is secured, meaning the vote actually takes place. Now, if it actually says pending funding approved, then it's okay. But, again, and I apologize, because some of those documents are 420-odd pages, so if I missed that in there, I apologize, and I'd love for someone to point it out, but if it does not say pending approval, there's a problem. But, even more importantly, and I'll pass this around to you, these are the minutes from the special town meeting of the 24th. I'll let you all get those in your hands. Walter, I appreciate a little leaning in as this goes around. I mean, it's time-wise.
Keep this time, Greg.
I keep it this time? In 30 seconds.
These are the official minutes as filed by the town clerk, and it's the town clerk's responsibility to ensure that the minutes are taken and filed for all special town meetings. Now, if you look, there's not only not a motion made, there's not one vote recorded in these minutes. You know, those of you that know, that when bond packages go out, they include the documentation that the town is actually voting. These official minutes do not show that whatsoever. Since there is no video recording of said meeting, and there is no audio recording of said meeting, this is what's official. So I believe that, and again, how could this have been prevented? It's the same thing we've discussed before. Do you read these things? Do you review them? Do those members of the council review them? Does the mayor review them? Does the town clerk review them? Does the town attorney review them? Does the director of finance review them? Does anybody review them? And you've now put the town in a little bit of a pickle, because you're going to have to push back the funding for this, because you've got to go on another town meeting and go through all the other approvals. Now, again, if there's a way to prevent that, I hope there is, but either way, if there isn't a way to, if there is a way to prevent it, you've still pushed things back, because you have a purchasing meeting on the 13th, on this Thursday, to go over the bids. And if those initial RFPs went out without saying pending funding, that's wrong, you have to review those. And since clearly there's no record of any vote being taken, there's no guarantee that there's funding. So what does that leave the town people to wonder about? More importantly, what does that leave the contractors to think about? I mean, above all else, do they even trust that we know what we're doing? Who's piloting the ship? If you can answer that, I'd love to know, and I think so with the rest of the townspeople, because we're talking, what? $20 million? And nobody reads it? Nobody reads $20 million of taxpayer debt? That says a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Great moment, please.
Hi, Greg Mullin, 39 Meadowway Drive. Here to speak on behalf of keeping Attorney Grimes' position. I was happy to see the finance department put funding back in with the intent of keeping the position open. Matt's certainly helped me with all of my concerns regarding FOI issues, questions as a committee member. I enjoyed his classes when he gave his time up at night to do classes for the town. Not many people took advantage of it, but I did. He refuses to give me any information other than what he deems appropriate, and I respect him for that. You know, and it's nice to have somebody in-house that I'm comfortable with, without really worrying about running up a big bill for the town. I would not feel that same level of comfort if I had to call Kramer Anderson, never mind getting a phone, return phone call from them. I ask you to give him another year, and to keep close track of his activities, to make sure that his time more than pays for itself. I think maybe that's the one area that wasn't done, didn't justify the work that he had done all year, and what Kramer Anderson would have charged for that, so, but I'm in favor of keeping him. All right? Thanks very much.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is a point of order or out of order, the Jeff Winter comment. Can we have the attorney respond to that?
Actually, I'd be glad to, Walter. We have our finance director here. So first of all, our bond counsel, which is who? Pitney. We asked him if we could do the bids prior to, and we can. Am I correct? Thank you. So that was already clarified.
The end of public comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the votes are actually recorded on a sheet that was provided by Dave Pitney to Mr. Osso. They're not recorded in the official minutes of the town meeting, but they are recorded on the sheet.
Mr. Attorney, that works for me, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, moving on to mayor's comments. First, I'd like to say we could have another brief moment of silence for Mr. Daniel Kendrick. He was the gentleman that passed away, because he was the one that was trapped in the conveyor belt at Namilford Block and Supply. So if we could just have a moment in remembrance. May his memory be eternal. Next, I'd like to congratulate the Namilford Boys and Girls Baseball Team and Girls Softball Teams for a very good season. I went to both their banquets, and it's great to see those young men and women wearing our green and white with pride, and I thank them, the teams, the moms, the dads, the coaches, for that. I'd also like to congratulate the Boys High School 4x400 relay team. They set a new school record. They're also SWC champs, Class L champs, and All-New England champs. Again, showing great pride, wearing our colors well, and I thank them for their efforts. I'd also like to thank the family in Children's Aid, because they had a Major League Baseball clinic this past Saturday. Had some kids down there, had some old Major League Baseball players there, and it's great to see. Also like to thank the sponsors. I believe Dr. Mullin, you were one as well, and Katie, I believe you were as well, for the, and the teachers and volunteers and students at the Walking Project at Saranoke, teaching kids the importance of activity and working together, so I'd like to thank everyone for that. Also, I had a chance to visit the marching band of the high school, Scaticope at Saranoke. They had their big bash, band bash at Saranoke, and I can tell you, those kids are quite talented, so I want to thank them for that.
It was a bash?
Bash, it definitely was a bash. Let me tell you. Also like to congratulate former town councilman Bob Capola. He was the recipient of the DAR, and it's the daughter of the American Revolution, his community, there's Community Service Award. So I'd like to thank him for that, for all of his service that he's done for our community. And I'd like to thank DAR for their commitment to our town as well. Also, Literacy on the Green had their picnic at Harrowbrook Park, and I was fortunate enough to be there, and it helped congratulate two more U.S. citizens that are now U.S. citizens on behalf of Literacy, helping them become U.S. citizens, so that was great. Also, quickly, as well, we are beginning our second year of our roads project. Right now, Squire Hill is in, working on putting on the second phase of asphalt. We're looking for completion of that, probably the middle of July. We are working, as some had said already today, on our packages for our roads that are going, that are going out. Like to thank our design engineers, our DPW team, all working hard to get these nine roads up and running. We're also going to be doing, I believe, 28, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, 29 miles of crack, 26, sorry, of chip seal, and we're also going to be doing some crack seal. These are all maintenance to keep the roads that we do have in fair condition, keep them so they're not going to fall into more disrepair. As we all know, we have over 200 miles of roads. It's expensive to keep them updated, and we're working hard to bring those roads that are disrepair to repair, and also keeping a maintenance program in place, keep those ones that are okay, still okay. I'd like to thank our DPW team for that. Also, we're working on roofs. Saranoke Roof will be the first one. That one, as we all know, is in, needs major repair. There has been some leaks there, and we're working diligently on that. For those that don't know, in the back of the town hall here, we're doing our oil tank replacement there, then we're going to do the police station, and then we're going to do Saranoke as well. Some quick updates, the senior center's been very busy. They provided assistance to 134 individuals with food insecurity, food insecurity, medical, financial, or their chore services, and that was a total, when you add all those, up to 264 units of service. All together, with all the programs they do, and all the activities they've done so far, 1,498 these last two weeks, and 384 of those were unduplicated participants. Social Services has been very busy. For those that didn't know, we did have a fire at Harrowbrook Condos, and Social Services team, along with the American Red Cross, have been helping those particular citizens that have been, you know, left without any kind of shelter right now while they're fixing up the four units. I can't thank our first responders enough for their quick response, our fire and our police, because it could have been much worse. So I'd like to thank them for their services, they always do. They have also been working with some of our people in need with Eversource, with the shut-off notices, so that's one of the things Social Services does do, is help, they're the liaison between the people that can't afford the full bill and Eversource to create a payment plan, so I'd like to thank them for that. They're also working with those renters, too, that qualify for the renters rebate program, so they're continuing to work with that. They also work with families for the Back to School program, even though school's not out yet, they're working ahead for this August. Their food bank was steady with 153 families that visited the food bank this week. Also, they are there at the farmer's market for SNAP recipients, so we'd like to thank them for all the work that they do. Quick update on Lindemmy. So Lindemming, hearing a lot of positive feedback from our residents concerning our safety measures that we put in place, so I'm thankful for that, thankful for the park and rec team for continuing on with that. They are also continuing the mowing of our fields. They've also been taking care of our softball and baseball fields, regrooming those. Also, Clark Outdoors will be offering canoe and kayak rentals. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Item four, the consent agenda, move to approve all items on the consent agenda with, oh, with an amendment in addition, I believe it's just a typo, on our motion to move into executive session. Mike Zarba, Director of Public Works, was also included. We can just...
And if I could ask, if you could amend the motion in the second, also, to withdraw the Ethics Commission appointment? And the reason being is, in talking with our Ethics Chairman and looking at our ordinances, you can't have two of the same party as alternates. So, we want to make sure we're clarifying that, so if you could make that first and the second as well.
So we have two adjustments, adding Mike Zarba to enter into the executive session on the minutes, and to remove, that's, this is a separate item, so that's the only thing for consent.
Yep, you're right, sorry.
I was still second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item five, we will move to accept, I move to accept following appointments, an amend, first, that we remove the Ethics item for Austin Shackelford, as the mayor just announced, and approve the zoning board of appeals for Sal Rinkowitz and Frank Greco. The term for Sal, June 10th, 2019, November 30, 2021, and Frank, June 10th, 2019, to 11:30, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Wait a minute, Dr. Mullin.
Are these members or...?
These are members.
Then they must be replacing, because this is a...
Yes, they're vacant, they've been vacant, these positions.
Yes, but they have to be replacing Republicans.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure.
Yep. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Aye. Motion to approve a resolution authorizing the town's issuance of general obligation, refunding bonds pursuant to Section 7-37(c) of Connecticut General Statutes in order to refund all or a portion of town's outstanding general obligation bonds, including but not limited to the town's general obligation bonds issued in 2008 and 2010.
Second.
Thank you. Greg?
Yes, what you have is documentation from our bond counsel, Dave Pitney, our financial advisor, had apprised the mayor and myself of an opportunity to refund our 2008 and 2010 general obligation bond issuance.
Refinance.
Pardon me?
Refinance.
Refinance, right. And he estimates that if rates are favorable, we can save up to, on a net basis, $174,000. And I recommend pursuing this. We'll do this at the time that we go to the bond market and the bond market.
Is that per year? $174,000 per year? Or total?
No, in total.
So what's the annual savings for that? Just so I know the budget impact.
It varies, anywhere from $15,000 to $18,000 a year.
Per year, okay.
Greg, is your on 10-year?
Pardon me?
What was the length of the bond?
The term won't change. They're going to mature when they were originally, initially intended to mature, so that's not going to change. Only thing that's going to change is the amount of interest that we pay on these bonds.
Put your refinance to a lower rate.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven, move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the town of Namilford and TRI utility cost reductions.
Second.
Thank you, Walter. So, what I'd like, there's a company, they're TRI Utility Company, and basically what their job is, is they take a look at all of our utility bills, and not to show savings of how much energy you could save, or phone you could save by doing different equipment things, it's just actually seeing, did they add it right? It's a full forensic audit. Bethel did this a couple of years ago, and saved, I believe, over $100,000. So what I'd like to ask the council is just the ability to negotiate, not to sign the contract, but to be able to speak with them, and then bring this back to the council, because the verbiage in this contract, according to Randy, is not what we need to do. So, I'm just asking for the ability to continue talking with them. Only ability to save money.
No questions. So you will talk with them about it, and then if their answer to that question is to your liking, you will go ahead and execute the contract?
I'll bring it, I will bring it back.
Will come back?
Once it's, yes, once it's been revised.
The $100,000 saving that you mentioned that Bethel received, was that after they took their cut?
Correct.
Of the savings?
Yes.
Is that part negotiable? I said...
That's for... Yep.
Anything's negotiable.
Okay, I hope it is.
All right.
Sounds like a great...
Dr. Mullin?
Will the town attorney or Randy DeBella be with you during this?
Absolutely.
Have you decided who is going to be with you? The town attorney or Randy?
It would probably be Randy on this one. Yep. Any other discussion? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Next is, yep, motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Move to call a special town meeting for 6:45 PM, June 24th, 2019.
Oh. What happened?
Missed date. Oh, I'm sorry.
Katie, you're my...
I know.
Katie, I'm with you, Katie. Yes.
Walter, I'm getting into the every day is Saturday mode, aren't I? Okay, sorry about that. Let's go to number eight. What do you say to that? Okay. So, motion to move to approve the creation of a deputy foreman position in the Public Works Department.
Second.
Greg, come on up.
So, go ahead, Greg. I was going to say, the creation of this deputy highway foreman, we are eliminating the highway superintendent position, and this creates assistance to the highway foreman. There'd been a working foreman as a part of the Teamster contract years ago, which had been eliminated through the budget process. So what this position does, it elevates that working foreman to supervisory responsibilities and provides assistance to the highway foreman, and that's what the job description is.
And we're looking to reorganize and retool the DPW, speaking with Mr. Boucher and Mr. Zarba, looking at ways to bring the vicious statement of metrics down to all levels of the department. The thought was adding this position, which can definitely bring more of a metric-based thought process, management style, all the way down to our workforce. One thing I did want to say was, the salary that's on here on the right is incorrect. In speaking with our Public Works Director, and in speaking with Greg, this did take into effect the ability for overtime, because this was a position that was union, that will now be non-union, so we wanted to make it where it would be fair to the person that would be in this position. So the new salary actually be what, Greg?
I think we were discussing between $62,000 and $63,000. And to shed some light on this, the, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, what I was going to say is, the working foreman in 2008 was earning an annual salary of $51,000 with the ability to earn overtime, and didn't have any of the management experience or management responsibilities. So going forward 11 years, the increase of the $12,000 or $13,000, whatever the council would decide, I think to be reasonable for what the expectations of the job is.
That's helpful, thank you. So, I heard Mayor Bass say that we eliminated the highway superintendent position. What was the salary and...
The salary for the highway superintendent was $79,000.
Did that include overtime or not?
That, it was a non-union position, not eligible for overtime.
So we took that out, and then you set a number, the working foreman with overtime, or how much last budgetary cycle?
Well, the working foreman was from 2008, and was earning $51,000. I don't know what the overtime earned that year was. I don't have that.
So what about last year?
The working foreman has been eliminated.
So we're going to elevate.
So a union maintainer position would be how much, including overtime on average, Greg?
Okay, so I actually have two examples. So our yard controller, which is just above a grade one, earned $67,000 last year.
With overtime or without?
With overtime.
Okay.
Okay. And then our grade one earned $59,000. So for this position falling right in the middle, I think it's a reasonable position at $62,000 or $63,000.
So just to clarify, so it sounds like we're... Okay. So I actually have two examples. So our yard controller, which is just above a grade one, earned $67,000 last year.
With overtime or without?
With overtime.
Okay.
Okay. And then our grade one earned $59,000. So for this position falling right in the middle, I think it's a reasonable position at $62,000 or $63,000.
So just to clarify, so it sounds like we're saving, because you know, like mailing the savings. So if I take the highway superintendent position and your estimate of the other two positions with overtime, we're going to save about $60,000 net. True?
No.
Director Penangal?
No.
The yard person will still be there?
He was using it as the...
I was using it as example of earnings.
We eliminated a position, and we're elevating another position, correct or not correct?
This was eliminated in 2008.
The highway superintendent was?
No, the working foreman.
Yeah. Same. Highway superintendent was eliminated when? That was last budgetary cycle.
February.
So that is a savings, right?
There will be savings in this.
All right. How much is the savings?
It's going to be, yeah, it'll be about $70,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Any?
So we have the highway foreman doing two jobs now.
Right now, we do.
Okay, so this, some comments?
I'm all for it, Paul.
Okay. Well then, got to be a little bit easier for you guys then. Okay.
Katie?
Great. Just a couple of things.
It'll work for me. Absolutely.
So, I'm just curious, the Call Before You Dig program, who does that now?
It's falling into the highway foreman now. Yep.
Okay. And this person, whomever they may be, is going to be also responsible for responding to residential concerns and providing updates. Will this person, who may come from Union or may come from Mars, will they go through the training that others with, that work in the town in a capacity of dealing with residents? Will they also go through that? Because sometimes when we move people from one place to another, not that they're not capable, but if it's important enough to train everybody in this building, I think it's important enough to make sure that they receive the same training so that they are on the same plane, which I think you would agree with.
Absolutely.
So will that occur as a normal process of whomever?
As a part of the regular process for training for all the non-union employees? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Works for me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank Greg.
Greg, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we'll go to item nine, and I make a motion to approve the town's participation in the 2019 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistant Act, known as NAA program, and the authorization of the applicant agencies.
Second.
And this for everybody's edification, this is the same one that the culinary school receives each year, and in our previous public hearing that we had, they were the only applicant. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Now, number 10, Walter. Okay. Move to call a special town meeting at 6:45 PM on June 24th, 2019, in the E. Paul Martin Room of the Town Hall, 10 Main Street in Milford, Connecticut, to consider the following. To vote upon a resolution pursuant to Section 903d of the Town Charter, establishing a Blight Prevention Board and Blight Appeals Board as set forth in Chapter 10 of the Cota ordinances. Note, the town council approved this ordinance on May 28th, 2019. The creation of new boards requires town meeting approval pursuant to Section 903d of the Town Charter.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.